Thank you all for being here tonight. We will call our meeting to order and we pray that we can work together tonight to provide solutions to continue to make this the greatest county in North Carolina to live in. Right now, we'll call on Pastor Greg McEwen from Bear Creek Baptist Church to come up and do our invocation for us. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you so much, and good evening to each of you. On behalf of my wife Stephanie and our Associate Pastor Reverend Rodney Pierce that's here with us tonight, we bring you greetings from Bear Creek. We thank you for your service to this county. Thank you for this privilege tonight, and we wish you the best during this election season and our prayerful support during this as well. And also, if you'd allow me a moment, let me just say happy birthday to Ms. Benita tonight, working on her birthday.
Thank you, sir.
That's above and beyond the call of duty. So if you'll indulge me, we'll ask a word of prayer for you tonight. Great God and Father, for our Lord Jesus Christ, we are thankful that you are aware, that you are concerned with the business of man. Father, that we may call upon you, that we may seek your counsel, that we may trust in your intercession on our behalf, and that we may gain godly counsel in all matters. And so Heavenly Father, tonight, on behalf of these fine men and women set apart for the work of the Board of the County Commissioners, we ask your special blessing upon them. We pray that you would assist them in the work to be done and in the decisions to be made, and all accomplished for the good of Davie County and its citizens. And always, Father, we ask to the glory of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord, for it's through his precious name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Now for our invocation, we'll have Mr. Joseph Scott, who's a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. He served from 1968 to 1972 with a deployment in Vietnam. He was awarded the National Defense Service Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal, the Vietnam Campaign Medal Combat Action Ribbon, and Good Conduct Medal. During his active service, Mr. Scott married his bride Linda of 34 years. After service, Mr. Scott worked for a convenience store company for over 33 years and retired in 2005 after his wife Linda passed away. In September 2006, he and his new bride Joyce moved to Davie County. Mr. Scott recently made headlines in the Davie County Enterprise for miraculously surviving his heart that stopped during a morning walk. Davie County EMS arrived on scene and admitted CPR, reviving Mr. Scott. They then transported him to Atrium Health Wake Forest Baptist where he spent seven days in the hospital. He received a pacemaker and a defibrillator. He is doing well, and we are glad he's here with us today. Mr. Scott?
Thank you. And it's really good to be here. You are looking at the luckiest man in Davie County, probably in the United States, one of them anyway. I was with Rescue down in Wilson, North Carolina for several years. I started CPR several times, never was successful with it. And, you know, I thank God that I'm here today. And I thank you guys for supporting and guiding and leading one of the best EMS paramedic groups in the state of North Carolina. I honestly believe, and I'm gonna get a little choked up, so I'm sorry, had I been anywhere else, I wouldn't have made it. Davie County has treated me great. I have spent the last 17 years here. I grew up on the beach, and I spent a big part of my time on the beach. I ran convenience stores all over the South. And I retired to take care of my first wife, and she didn't make it. But anyway, I'm with my second wife, and she's a great lady, a little bit more in charge than my first wife. But when the EMS pulled me through, they not only saved me, they saved my wife. She's in a wheelchair, mobile as I can make her. And like I said, we both thank God, these people, and all of you people for just being a part of Davie County. We love you. So I was a Marine. I saw more than I should have as a 19-year-old. And, you know, God brought me through that too. So I would like to lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
Ethics and conflict disclosure.
Pursuit to North Carolina General Statute 168, Age 86, and Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I've asked each of you before you adopt the agenda if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter that's on the proposed agenda which come before the board tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before you adopt the agenda. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
All right. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Do we need to remove?
No.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Do we have second? Terry seconds. Any other questions? All in favor? All right. We'll move on to presentations, and first we'll have the Brian Jacobs Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate Award. Thank you. Sheriff.
Thank y'all for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. I've been here several times. I think I've told y'all, we started a few years ago, a drive to improve our training, and I've presented this award several times to deputies over the last couple of years in front of y'all, but tonight is a special night for me. Brian Jacobs is my chief deputy, and I'd like to talk just a minute about Brian. He's been in law enforcement since 1999, so that's 25 years. Like a lot of young officers that we have in Davie County, he reached that point where he thought going to another place would be good for him in his career, so he left for a couple of years, and he realized that serving the folks where he lives and home, and that is the best thing for your career. So he came back. He has worked tremendously, does a tremendous job. I cannot tell you about his work ethic. He served as a patrol officer, a detective, as an SRO. He was our lead SRO in the school system for nine years. Served as a watch commander, served as the captain over the patrol division, which is the largest division of the sheriff's office. And for the last three years, he served as my chief deputy. He does a tremendous job. I'm blessed to have him, and the citizens of this county are blessed to have him. I think all of us, or most of us, know that Brian, in the last little bit, has suffered a personal crisis, health crisis. I've gained more respect for him through this. Could not be prouder to work with him. Through all of it, he has continued to work. He has continued to serve the citizens of this county. And there are days that some of y'all don't see him, but I see him and think, how did he get here today? But he's there, working for y'all. In the middle of it, he's completed two sessions of a very intensive chief deputy school. He'll complete the third session this summer and graduate from that. So I have two awards to present to him tonight. The first is just a service award. Brian, will you come up? It's the State of North Carolina is just recognizing Brian for 25 years as a law enforcement officer, serving the citizens of Davie County and the state of North Carolina. Will I hold this up? This is the award that we've been striving for all of our deputies to get. It's called your advanced law enforcement certificate. I've explained before, but I'd like to take just a minute and explain to the audience again that. So this takes a tremendous amount of training to receive. It's a point system from the state that will award this to you. Takes 20 hours of training to get one point. You have to have 69 points to be able to get this. Your rookie school doesn't count, and what we call in-service training, which is your required training every year to stay a law enforcement officer, does not count for it. So you have additional classes or training that you can go to over the years. Brian has done that and got his 69 points, actually a few more than that, and I am happy, sir, to present this from the state of North Carolina as your advanced law enforcement certificate. If y'all mind taking a quick break. Thank you, Brian.
Paul, Paul Moore, Davie County Recreation and Parks Annual Highlights.
at some of our events, and he has been a most pleasure to work with, and has worked through a lot of, a lot of events with us and the preparedness plans that we put together, so congratulations again. My name's Paul Moore, Director of Recreation and Parks. Commissioners, thank you for allowing us a little bit of time tonight to talk about our 2023 annual highlights. Tonight, I have with me Mercedes Barr, our marketing and events coordinator, and I will hand it off to her to get us started.
Hello. My name is Mercedes Barr. For those who did not hear that, thank you again for letting us present tonight. At DCRP, we bring you all things play. We value the impacts of all things play, and we encourage all of Davie County to believe that. And yes, you too can play from K to gray. In this slide, you'll notice that our spotlight is our bullet point to our vision, and through our vision, the DCRP team dedicates countless planning hours to create exceptional recreation experiences and elevate a higher quality of life in Davie County. Nothing to really see here except for a very fun thumbs up and consistent agency numbers. In the next slide, we shall shallow dive into permits. While the facility hours are important data, the eye-popping surface is the sheer number of actual paid permits we issue. What's important for the public and our leadership to know is that for every permit issued, there's plenty of behind-the-scenes labor going on to ensure permit holders' experience is remembered. In the top two snapshots, if the top two snapshots could talk to each other, Open Gem might say, per capita, I grew faster than you. While park visits might return the same old classic line, where's the beef? We gotta get out of here. Either way, both speak volumes as to continued perceived values Davie County Government, Parks, and Recreation. Oh, Lord, excuse me. Either way, both speak volumes as to continued perceived value Davie Community Park has on our residents and visitors. The lasting effects of COVID-19 have hit our adaptive inclusion athletes and their families the hardest. However, new partnerships and new ways of connecting these families together have given rise to access opportunity, and most importantly, activities to participate. There's not, and this is not a rebirth, ladies and gentlemen, this is an imaginary at new levels. As we can see, photos from 2023 from our Special Olympics of Davie County. Thank you, Katie, for all you do. Our Davie County splash pad continues to be a summer feature destination and part of the tourist dollar tree. Tag-team efforts between Emily and myself have taken our algorithm to infinity and beyond. People are wondering just what DCRP will do and bring next. Our best cost recovery year to date. While this is great, there's still work to be done for the future. Partnerships between DCRP and local organizations are important to our agency and are most valuable when the service door swings equally. We continue to complete an array of projects each year that enhance the parks and its facilities as well. And now I'll turn it over to our director, Paul Moore.
Thank you, Mercedes. So in 2023, we embarked on another journey, which is our comprehensive recreation park master plan. This will be coming up for adoption next month to the board, so a couple of key takeaways that will be coming. This will take us into the next five to seven years. And what's extraordinary about Davie County is we do not have a park system yet, and I emphasize yet. So a lot of land banking is being talked about with our community input. We've had a tremendous amount of community input through this process, a lot of land banking and looking at what is going to create our spine next. So be aware that that's coming up. Our next big adventure is our Canapelya tree scape. So DCRP was one of a few agencies across the state that won the very first accessibility for parks grant. And with this award, we've reached the $1 million grant award mark here in Davie County in just seven years. So with this, I want you to imagine an all-inclusive, an all-inclusive play structure, not a treehouse, but a tree scape. It's adventure meets nature. It's going to happen. We look to open up, we look to open up after tonight's meeting, a new contract with a vendor that we look forward to working with to create this project. It'll be a public input process as well, and we look to be under construction maybe late fall, so be looking forward to that. Next is our community recreation agency grants. It's an area of local government that works, and it is a very good steward of the tax dollar. It's what was designed and purpose. So here you can see our 22, 23, and 23, 24 numbers. And just to give you an idea of what some of these things do, while they, while these other agencies may not direct, are not directly related to Davie County Recreation and Parks, they're an existential avenue of opportunity for our residents to experience. So some of the, one of the three projects that was awarded from last year, River Park created a new trailhead. Camp Manna has created a new zip line equipment, as well as hanging bridge obstacle course. And then one of our newest, one of our newest grant recipients is Tom Cowden Youth Shooting Sports Clinic, in which we program with annually, created five new stands that they can do a tremendous amount of programming. Moving forward, going into Program of the Year, as I just mentioned, Tom Cowden Youth Shooting Sports, working with Nelson has been a tremendous asset for our team and partnership as we've developed many summer programs to facilitate different types of camps and clinics throughout the year. So they are the reason why what their program highlights are Program of the Year. For athletics, this is tremendous. It's our youth basketball league. While it could be, in its own right, a success story every year, this year's season is special. We've had five consistent years of enhanced growth in this program, and that speaks to our, that speaks to our character development, our coaching of the league, and our coaches as well. These coaches, men and women, give countless hours to these kids to teach them to grow, to love a sport, and to learn how to bond as a team, so congratulations to them. Our special event of the year, so for two years in a row, it's been associated with our splash pad. And this past year, we introduced now a family night glow splash party instead of just teens only, was tremendous. Sold out almost instantaneously, and we're looking to do about two of those this summer, so very excited, as the kids absolutely love the little Bellagio effect and lighting that we put on. Before we finish up, I'd like to take a little bit of time to talk about our team. You know, it consistently reminds me, you know, we've had some, we've had, we've gone through some bittersweet changes, a little bit of turnover, where staff have moved on to bigger and better things, and that's why I say it's bittersweet. But it constantly reminds me that the value of our team that we have now is ever so strong, and I just want to speak to that. So our newest, our newest employee, Justin Dotson, has filled our athletic program director role, just finished this, his first youth basketball season. He's a coach. He's been a, he's been a coach. He's also coaches baseball in the league, so tremendous asset to our team and has pulled together a wonderful league this year. Next, Mercedes, what can I say? She's recently come back from event management school and has completed her recent designation of CFEA, Certified Festival Events Associate. We often pick on her now because her credentials are now as long as the spelling of her name, but congratulations Mercedes, that is a, that is, just completing a licensed recreation therapist and certified recreation therapist specialist is a tremendous feat, but to add more accolades and certifications is tremendous. Emily Miller is our customer care administrator, and she hasn't been with us quite a year, almost a year, but be able to take hold of our agency and learn the ins and outs of our organization is extraordinary. Marnik Lewis, can't say anything more about him other than he is a true asset when it comes to the organization of our rentals and our permits, making sure the experience is created for our renters out there. And of course, the rest of our team, including Aiden Humphries, Patty Lorick, Carter Pollard, and James Rawl. Patty is a retired professional, and she still has her certified pool operator's license, so not many agencies can say that they have that. So just want to give kudos there to my, to my team for all that they do. They make a tremendous impact each year. And with that being said, on behalf of our agency, our county, our advisory board, you know, we're reaching new heights, and we encourage everybody to stay active, to be fit and score throughout 2024, and to know that no matter your age, no matter the barrier or hesitation, we encourage you to believe that, yes, you too can play, no matter what age. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. If I, I will answer any questions if you have any.
Questions?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Mercedes. Appreciate all y'all do. All right. Robin, with our monthly financial report.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll talk about the period ending January 2024. We're comparing this to the previous year's January 2024. As you can see here, we have about $1.6 million more of revenues, and mostly, mostly that's due to property tax collections. We have a bit of a better percentage than we did at this point last year. Also, there's some differences in some state grants, that's the difference in intergovernmental. And we have about $1 million more of expenditures. Most of that's due to the accounting for contributions made to other funds. Most other things are comparable to where they were last year. So just as a frame of reference, our total revenues for January are 60, about 67% of our estimates compared to about 66% last year, and expenditures are about 49% of the budget, and seven months' worth is 58%. So just let me know if you have any questions about that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. No other, no questions? That's outstanding. Okay, public comments.
Mr. Chair, we've had three, actually two individuals and one group sign up tonight. Each person, as I call your name, if you'll come to the podium, state your name into the microphones so that we've got that on the record. You're allowed three minutes to speak, or in the event of the organization, you're allowed five minutes to speak. I have been designated as timekeeper, and I will be holding up cards, letting you know when you've got two minutes, one minute, 30 seconds left, and then when it's time to stop. You'll address the board as a whole, and I'll ask for any verbal exchange back from the board. It's intent for public comments to require the board, it's not the intent of the public comments to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. And all comments will be in verbal form. You're not allowed to play any recordings or video. You're expected to observe the quorum of the meeting, be respectful in your language and your presentation, and not discuss anything under the Personnel Act with respect to any county employees.
Mr. Vogler, before you proceed, who's the group?
The group is Farmington Community Association Organization. First that we have up is Jennifer Riddle.
I'm Jennifer Riddle, and my husband Arnie Riddle and I live at 1640 Farmington Road. Last month, we updated you on our settlement agreement with Davie County in North Carolina, and I'm glad to report that we've received our settlement check, thanks to Joya Howard's involvement. Thank you, Mr. Vogler, for enlisting her help. We want to share more information which we think you should know. Remember that when all of this started in 2020, our house was almost finished, and we were planning on moving in within a few months. We think it is wrong that Brittany Mitchell, an employee of Davie County Environmental Health, came onto our property to reevaluate the soil without notifying us. We didn't know she was there until later when our septic installer told Arnie. The first time Arnie met with Brittany Mitchell and Kevin Neal, regional soil scientist for the state of North Carolina, Kevin failed our lot. The last thing Brittany said to Arnie was, you're going to get a system with all the bells and whistles. We didn't understand what this meant, but as we journeyed into this experience, Kevin's and Brittany's intentions became clear. We think it's wrong that Kevin Neal has the authority to revoke a properly acquired septic permit. We now wonder if any permits obtained from Davie County in North Carolina have any value at all. For five months, we tried to work with Kevin Neal to provide a septic system that would work on our lot, and we drove all over the county and talked to people who are building homes. We learned that there was a wide variety of septic systems being installed, and when we asked Kevin about these, he said that none of them would work on our lot, and the only system that would work was a shallow drip system. As we learned about this system, we realized while it worked well for huge resorts, it's a nightmarish residential system, and we were going to be the guinea pigs. There are many negative aspects to this system which I don't have time to share. In addition, we thought it was very strange that an engineer for the state of North In addition, we thought it was very strange that an engineer for the state of North Carolina, Trish Angoli, had Kevin draw the scale drawing for the drip system on our lot. Her own admission was that she had never been very good at scale drawings. Now that was a real builder of confidence. When Kevin and Trish didn't have our site plans ready when they said they would, we decided we needed help, so we hired an attorney, and then we hired soil scientists to evaluate our lot. The backyard, in fact, perked, and we were able to install our septic system over a year later than we originally anticipated. All this delayed moving into our house by a year. Think about this. At age 66, Arnie has spent his allotted resources to build a house. I really worry that the stress of all this might kill him. We spent countless hours anguishing and talking about this, and countless hours driving around five surrounding counties, looking at properties and homes, thinking we might have to find somewhere else to live. We believe Brittany Mitchell to be incompetent to evaluate soil. We believe Kevin Neal to be a manipulator. After all, he holds a BS in Soil Science from Clemson and an MS in Soil Science from West Virginia University. When our soil scientists were evaluating the backyard, one of them commented that Kevin had missed it on this one. He didn't miss it. We believe he lied about it to pave the way for installing the first shallow drip system in the area.
Next, we have Jody Everett.
Hello. Back again this month. I'll be very brief tonight. As many of you know, I spoke last month before the board. I've spoken numerous times over the last 10 years in relation to various zoning, zoning bits and pieces, both in favor of and in opposition to. There is a matter that will be before this board's attention, April 1st. My only request tonight is just an open invitation to this board. Not asking you to violate any sort of North Carolina open meeting laws. Come one at a time, come two at a time. Don't even talk to me if you're there, whatever. I'll leave my contact information with the, with the clerk or email it to you guys directly, but just love to have you guys, you know, you guys are asked repeatedly to ask, to make three-dimensional decisions with two-dimensional data. I think it's really important in this case especially, to come out, take a visit. The site's laid out. I'm sure that the, the other individual would probably welcome you there as well. If you want to meet with us together, certainly open to that. So anyway, thank you.
And then last, we have the Farmington Community Association spokesman, if you, he or she will come forward.
I have a handout for the commissioners if they-
And you'll have five minutes.
Okay.
If you'll give that to the clerk, and she can circulate that around or give it to the commission.
I'm Melanie Cook. I am the executive director at Farmington Community Association. I'm here with two of our board members, Allison Brown and Shannon Williams, that are sitting in the audience. We are here to share some of the exciting things that are happening at Farmington and ask Davie County to help us continue to reach more residents. Background, we've been in existence since 1971 and serving Davie County for more than 50 years. Our current offerings include four buildings with the original seven acres that we use for center use and rentals, plus the 60-plus acre Farmington Nature Park. Our goal is to impact and involve Davie County in four critical key areas. Connect, celebrate, adventure, and give. Connect, we have weekly low-cost activities and events such as cornhole, music jam, line dancing. Two of those events are going on this evening. Special events, we have a circus that comes yearly, community meetings, clubs and concerts, programs for children and adults with special needs, annual Farmington Fall Fest. Groups currently using the Farmington Center are Farmington Ruettans, 4-H, Girl Scouts, Piedmont Antique Power Association, Special Olympics, Davie High School FCA, Winston-Salem Dog Training Club, Davie County Coon Club, Davie County Little League, and youth travel softball teams. Most of those use the facility for free. A few of those are charged a nominal fee. We offer a place and activities for our community to get together and connect with each other. COVID lockdowns taught us one thing: social connections are linked to general and brain health. We need connection. Celebrate, our facilities are available for rent, and families love celebrating weddings, birthdays, quinceaneras, family reunions, baby showers, and anything worth celebrating. Businesses use our space for corporate meetings and employee recognition events. Adventure, our 67-plus acres are home to many activities, all for free or a donation basis. We have three pickleball courts, a 20-basket Davie disc golf course, outdoor walking track, two picnic shelters, children's playground, four-plus miles of hiking and biking trails, a launch site for twice-weekly cycling meetups, and two major fundraisers in the North Carolina Cycling Festival and the Tour of Farmington. Give, we request fund through wrecks and parks each year, but needed capital improvement projects. This year, we've requested $36,500 for much-needed repair and new construction of walkway overhangs. This impacts all of our guests, but is significant for those with special needs or the elderly. Nine years ago, Davie County grants helped with operating expenses. It takes a lot to maintain large facilities in the 67-plus acres of land, and those funds help us remain open to the public for free 365 days a year. Current grants that we acquire are for capital improvements or programs, gone our budgeted funds to help us operate. We are doing everything we do with private donations, rental income, and two fundraising events. Davie County citizens are utilizing Farmington. We served an estimated 7,500 unduplicated persons last year. We need Davie County buy-in to continue offering our facilities and nature park to the community. To continue operating with free amenities for Davie County residents, we need help. I believe we're the largest center in Davie County and with the most offerings of any other community center in our county. We have options. Option one is that we begin charging for entry to the park and grounds, or charging more for our activities. This would eliminate some of our senior citizens on limited incomes. Option two is we request that Davie County taxpayer funds be used to help provide our amazing facility to Davie County taxpayers for their continued use as a free amenity. That is what we are asking for. Commissioners have a history of past support for organizations such as Davie County Little League and the Park at Lake Louise, support that contributed to operational cost and crossed multiple years. We value what both those organizations do, and we hope our commissioners will see the value in what we do at Farmington and financially support the Farmington Center and Farmington Nature Park. What do you get in return, Davie County? Continued partnership with Farmington. We are a current site for Wreckin' Park, Moppel Park Days, and Grinch on the Move, senior services meetings, county community input meetings, Chamber of Commerce and Leadership Davie meetings, senior games, Davie Library on the Move events, Davie County Schools, and Special Olympics events in sports. Davie County is growing, and feelings are mixed. Growth means increased tax revenue, more citizens, more jobs. It also means the loss of precious farmlands. We are a piece of a larger puzzle, and we value our partnership. Farmington offers Davie County residents a place to connect, celebrate, and adventure. We are asking Davie County government to give, include operational funds for us in your yearly budget, so we can continue being a place for residents for the next 50 years. Thank you all for all you do.
County managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three things to report tonight. Number one, congratulations to Brian Jacobs on his award and his hard work. I know, being the sheriff chief deputy, that's a, that's two full-time jobs, so to be able to pull this off is quite impressive. I am happy to report tonight, with the assistance of our county attorney, Ed Vogler, we were able to close on the property on Main Church Road that will serve as our future ag center and potential recreation site that we had gone under contract back in December. So that is officially now county property. And then third, remember tomorrow is Elections Day. If you are not able to early vote, you have all day tomorrow that you can go out to the polls to vote. Please keep in mind that if you do go out, and we encourage everybody who is registered to do so, to bring your ID with you, because you will need it to be able to vote. And that's all I have.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Manager Barnett? All right. Consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Finney makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Renninger, second. Any questions? All in favor? Okay. All right. Any old business? Any new business? All right, commissioners' comments, Mr. Shove.
I'd like to say congratulations to Brian. We're proud of what you've accomplished, and it's just great to hear that. And I can't believe that it was six, what, 69 times 20 or something like that? That's a lot. So that's pretty impressive. That's not just some kind of little online course for 20 minutes that gets you a credential. You had to work hard to get that. Like to thank the parks and recreation. Every time I kind of go by there, and I'm on the board as a, what is it called, extra non-voting member, but go to those, I'm really proud of what goes on down there. We need to embrace any development of our park system. It's a kind of a quality of living thing, and I think Paul and his staff has done an excellent job with that. I also like to thank the Farmington Center and what's been done there over the years. I mean, I hear a lot of people that go up there, whether it be the bluegrass, or the disc golf, or to walk around, or play pickleball. When I drive by, it seems to be a very utilized facility and a lot of activities going in there. So thank you with what you've done with not that much over the years.
Ms. Finney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melanie, thank you for sharing your thoughts. And Jody, thank you for being here again tonight, and the Riddles who have left. I just wanted, I know these people are gone, but I want to thank Reverend McEwen for his awesome prayer to start our meeting, and for our veteran for sharing about his experience with our EMS system and for his service as well. But most of all, I wish Brian was still here. Because not only am I so proud of his accomplishments as a deputy, but over the last year, he has shown us what it's like to be an amazing human, and to be strong, and to still look to God, and to still give God the glory when you're suffering. And I'm just glad that he was here to receive that award. Not only that he accomplished those goals, but that he was here for us to honor him tonight. And I know his mom was very proud, and she was here as well. So we're just grateful for Brian's life as a servant and as a person. Just want to remind everybody to go vote tomorrow, and thank you all for being here.
Mr. Poindexter.
Yes, I would also like to say, not just congratulations to Brian, but thank you for your service as citizens of Davie County. And I'd like to extend a thank you to all our employees, past and present, for all the hard work they did to make Davie County what it is today. It's nice to look out here and see a good crowd and some smiling faces in the audience even. So y'all come back next month and enjoy your time till then.
Mr. Renninger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everyone coming out this evening, as always. It's always good to have interested people in the crowd, and we appreciate that. I too would like to congratulate Mr. Jacobs. That is a very deserving award, and for what he's been through, that's quite a feat. So fortunate to have him. Tomorrow, as has been said, is Elections Day. That right has been bled and died for, so please vote and hope to see you next month. Thank you.
We, we, we celebrate our employees, we celebrate Brian, and I certainly, we've all prayed for Brian, and we thank him for his, the success that he's had. And also, you know, we thank our EMS, our fire departments, our, our law enforcement. But one of the things that we've heard tonight, and I would just reiterate this, in terms of the quality of life in Davie County and what we do outside the walls of this building and all of our kind of government centers, is we heard from the Recreation Department, the wonderful job that Paul and his team are doing. Really, each one of our communities, Smith Grove, Sheffield, you name it, still have bits and pieces of community centers where, where they have activities. A lot of it surrounds the fire departments, but some of it, some of them have their own community centers that, that Paul and others give grants to. We also have the New Davie Community Park and all that they're doing, what Farmington is doing and has been doing for many, many years. We just, Brian talked about today, the new ag center, the property for that, and what that's going to do for all of the citizens of Davie County. It's not just going to be a place for a farmer's market. It's going to be an active destination that celebrates our agriculture community. We have Truist Park, we have Rise, the Rise facility, we have the Davie Little League Baseball Facility, we have Davie Little League Football, we have the Park at Lake Louise, we have Greenways and walking trails at Rich Park, and now they're, we're building those out all over the county. We certainly have our historic Rich Park in Moxville. These are things that we do outside of, of education, public safety, and keeping the water running that make Davie County a destination for folks to come to. And so I was just writing those down as Paul and Ms. Cook were here talking and others about all of the things that are, that are going on here in Davie County. And so we thank you for all that each of you do to make this a great place to live. And I would encourage, as others have, for you to go out and take advantage of your right to vote tomorrow. And we will, I believe we have one other item here. We will not have a closed session tonight, okay? So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.